Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zachem.
Here.
Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If all my colleagues and staff as well as guests could please rise as Counselor Flaherty comes up, I ask that folks remain standing for the invocation, I'm sorry, remain standing after the invocation as Counselor Flaherty takes us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the pleasure of introducing someone who's no stranger to all of us here on the council. She had spent so much time here at City Hall, a lot of folks thought she was the 14th City Counselor. But, but a little background, on Christmas Eve back in 1993, her son, her 15-year-old son Louis, was walking to an anti-gang violence meeting when he was unfortunately caught in the crossfire of a shootout. Since then, Chaplain Cherry founded Louis D. Brown Peace Institute back in 1994 in his honor and has used the space as a center of healing, of teaching, learning for families and communities impacted by murder and trauma, grief and loss. Chaplain Cherry has served families of murder victims for over two decades and has trained thousands of public health professionals, law enforcement officials, religious leaders, elected officials, in best practices for supporting survivors and interrupting the cycles of retaliatory violence. And we go back a lot of years from the month of May is the month of peace from the Purple Ribbon Campaign. We've done the Billboard Campaign, Bullets Don't Have Names, People Do. So Tina has walked the walk and has also founded the Mother's Day Walk for Peace, which will, which it's in its 22nd year, right? It's in its 22nd year, helping others struggle with violence in their lives and in their community. She's been the recipient of so many awards. She also holds honorary degrees from the College of the Holy Cross, Regis College in Monita. She's currently a Bar Fellow and will begin a sabbatical for three months starting in June. She's very excited to take, to take sabbatical. Her proudest accomplishment is being Louis, Alexandra and Allen's mother, as well as Alexandra's grandmother. So we thank her for joining us today. We are inspired by her effort every day on behalf of victims of violent crime and our entire city. And we wish her the very well in her ongoing collaborative work, particularly with respect to the Peace Institute, and hopefully a time when we can end violence on our streets and throughout all the neighborhoods. Without further ado, I introduce for the first time coming to the council as chaplain, that's Chaplain Tina Cherry.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning.
This is new for me, so when I was invited to come and do the invocation, I did a little research to see what the protocol is, so bear with me. What I did when, as I was preparing for the invocation, I saw an article that was sent to me by a reporter and I sent it to some of my counselors. And I just want to start off by reading it with you before we go into the prayer. The Boston Police Department maintains a gang database in which they enter names and information of individuals, teens, they believe to be gang members or associated with gang members, but with no oversight from agencies or individuals outside the police department. I sent this to my city counselors in hope that they will just ask a few more questions as to who these young men are and are they members of your district and constituents and see what we can do. There is a great appetite for peace inside of me, and I was looking for peace when my son was killed from city leaders. Instead, I realized I couldn't get it from our government, so I decided to focus on spiritual transformation when I found peace from within that started my own healing journey. Peace is the foundation that I stand on, and I have made a commitment to travel this path guided by seven core principles: love, unity, faith, hope, courage, justice, and forgiveness. And my vision is for people of diverse backgrounds, we can rise in ferment prayer believing and proclaiming peace as a priority in our city. I want to pray for peace. Dear God, the God of Abraham, Moses, Jacob and Isaac, it is in your name that we come praying for the peace of our beloved city. We pray for your protection, your safety, and your guidance. We pray for our Boston City Councilors that you give them wisdom and grace. Let us pray for all who have been affected by violence and ask that you give them peace and healing. Let us pray for those who have committed the violence, that they may seek you and heal from their generational trauma. Micah 6:8 tells us, "He has showed you, O man, O woman, what is good; and what does the Lord require of you? To act justly, to love mercy, and to humbly walk with your God. Lord, we stand boldly to proclaim your peace in our hearts, mind, and action." I pray that you continue to work in unity as a body of servant leaders in our beloved city regardless of your culture, your class, and your creed. I pray that you know you are each a ray of hope in this city as you create and pass and amend local laws. I pray for your courage to serve as a link between the people of Boston and their municipal government. I pray that you see God's love as you serve your constituents by connecting them to the resources and services within city government. I pray for justice, that as a body of servant leaders, you continue to advocate for all Bostonians regardless of their circumstances. May your faith guide your every action, and may you seek at some times to forgive yourself and to forgive one another's when your decisions do not align. As we travel our own way and go about our own business, I declare this day that you are called and equipped to be agents of peace in love, unity, faith, hope, courage, justice, and forgiveness. I declare God's peace, God's power, and His presence among His people as we invest in preventions, possibilities, and purpose for the next generation. May the God of peace guide your heart, your mind, your words, and may you go forth to serve in peace. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tina, thank you very much for the prayer and always for the call to action. And I was one of the recipients of the email, and we will make sure that we ask some questions about that and get some feedback for you and our constituents, so thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up Counselor Presley for a special presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Recently, we celebrated the birthday and the life of a man who was turning 107 years old. And then we celebrated, then we celebrated the life and birthday of a man who was turning 70 years old. And today, we celebrate and pay tribute to a leader in our city who recently celebrated her 80th birthday. And that is Alfreda Ramsey Harris. You know, she goes by many monikers and many names. I won't get into all of them today, but Counselor President Campbell and I had the opportunity and the blessing to participate in her celebration recently and thought it appropriate, since we do consider her to be of dignitary status, to be formally recognized by this body. Ms. Harris is a native daughter of Roxbury. She is a resident and a constituent of Rosendale. Counselor McCarthy, if you'll join me up here. And she is a mother. She is a mother. She is a mother to many. We call her coach, we call her mentor, we call her mother, we call her aunt, we call her a role model, we call her a leader, we call her family. My husband often says that the best way to describe her is that she holds you and she scolds you. And that is true. She has been an encouraging, consistent, and challenging presence and a mentor, not only to the many youth in our city, but certainly to many of us. And we are grateful for her. In addition to her leadership role at the Shelburne, for those of you that don't know, we have a living legend amongst us. Ms. Harris is nationally renowned for her history making championships, four New England championships, for the UMass-Boston and Roxbury Community College Girls Basketball Programs. And she is also in the Basketball Hall of Fame for those contributions. We thank her for her many contributions to civic and political life, and again, youth development. And I think it's very apropos that Chaplain Cherry delivered the invocation for this meeting. Indeed, peace is possible. Community is possible when we build it, and peace is possible when we work for it. And that all begins with an investment in human development. And Ms. Harris has done that and done that intentionally for decades. Although there are buildings named after her, awards named for her, and she has received too many accolades and Paul Revere Bowls and citations and plaques to count, but I know that her greatest reward and her greatest award is the lives that she has touched and changed and transformed. You know, it is easier to quantify sadly the lives that we have lost. It is harder to quantify the lives that have been saved. But I have no doubt in my mind that Ms. Harris has saved the lives of so many young people. And the legacy and the manifestation of that is all around us in this city, in elected officials that are in this chamber, in people that are in law enforcement, judges, educators, and indeed, coaches. So Ms. Harris, we wish you a very happy birthday. And I'm going to bring up Counselor McCarthy to say a few words, and then we have a special present, a special presentation for you, and you can say something if you would like, and then hopefully everyone will come up, everyone will come up for a photo. Thank you.
She said she was going to say nothing about me, which is, which is great. Thank you very much, Counselor Presley, for inviting me up here. She has been such a positive impact on so many people, including me, back when we did the summer jobs thing. She was instrumental, and what she's done for Girls Hoop is second to none. But I do remember back in, it was like 97, 98, there was a young man who was, shall we say, honorably discharged from the Shelburne Center for doing something. And so he had to be let go. And I was at the Reggie Lewis Center in my little office there in the corner, and this kid comes in with his tail tucked between his legs, and I had no idea who he was. And he came in, he said, "Mr. McCarthy?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "I apologize. I don't want my job back, but I just apologized." And I looked at him, I said, "Who sent you?" And I knew it was going to come, it was going to be Ms. Harris. I said, "All right." So I said, "Is a phone call coming from Ms. Harris to get your job back?" He goes, "I hope so." I said, "All right." Off he goes. But that just goes to show you the lesson that those kids learned for all those years. So I'm very happy to be here. She's an awesome person, so, you know, I'm looking forward to having everybody up here. Happy birthday. Thank you.
Yeah. So Ms. Harris, because of the many barriers that you have broken, especially for women, we thought it would be great to have, while we have this historic council, this is the most representative council in the history of this body, and certainly the number of women on this body has something to do with that. And we thank you for blazing a trail as you have for so many girls and women, and also for never ever giving up on our young people. And we love you and we thank you. And so we have a basketball that has been signed by everyone here, and just happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm a woman of very few words, but lots of action.
Yes.
But thank you very much for recognizing me, and thank you and Andrea so much for joining me on my special day, which was a lovely, lovely day, and I hope you both enjoyed it because I did. But, you know, in human service, you'll never get rich, let me tell you that. But the richest thing is when a young person walks up to you as an adult and says, "Thank you, Ms. Harris. I'm so glad I listened to you." That's my reward. Thank you.
So maybe should we go down here? We're going to do it in the well, right here.
Which well?
Right, right in front here so that we can see that basketball and put you in the middle like the coach. Oh, yeah. Yes, you can find Counselor Presley. You can find Counselor Presley. You don't want to spill all your finger on anything with it?
No.
Oh. Good. Good. Congratulations.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Where's my bread?
Where is your thing?
Where's mine? It's like 90, not this one. Can we suspend and pass that one? Sure. Oh, yes. It's a brand. It's free. I'll call on your counsel. Thank you. Suspend. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you again, Counselor Presley and Counselor McCarthy, and happy birthday, Ms. Harris. And thank you for your service to this great city. Say again? Thank you, Christine. At this time, moving on to more formal business, which isn't as exciting, on to the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes of the last meeting are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor?
Yes, oh, yes. And if we could just recognize Counselor Sabi George.
Oh, I apologize. Counselor Sabi George has joined us. Madam Clerk, if you could record that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0666, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $850,000 in the form of a grant for upgrading, expanding, and integrating technology and protocols related to anti-terrorism and anti-crime, anti-gang, and emergency response awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the Boston Intelligence Center for FY-18 allocation.
Docket 0666 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0667, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $130,253 in the form of a grant for the Retired Senior Volunteer Program known as SR, I'm sorry, RSVP, awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Services to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund 356 RSVP volunteers who will provide social support to homebound and older adults and individuals with disabilities.
Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to ask that we suspend the rules and accept this grant for the Elderly Commission today. This grant will fund the 356 Volunteers Program, 356 RSVP Volunteers Program, which provides social support to homebound or older adults and individuals with disabilities. The RSVP program, which is the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, will allow the Elderly Commission to recruit and train volunteers. These volunteers will aid in the transportation of our seniors, provide free health insurance information to clients, teach English as a second language, and provide critical support for our veterans and their families. This program provides much-needed companionship to adults and respite to our caregivers. It is holistic in its socially, emotional, and economical services. It engages a population of our city of 55 and over and that wants to continue to serve and engage with community. That is why, as the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend the rules and accept this grant today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. At this time, Counselor Presley, Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0667. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0667 has been passed.
Docket 0668, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $99,314 in the form of a grant for the Address Verification Program known as AVP, activities mandated by Massachusetts Sex Offenders Registry Board awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the FY-17 Burn Justice Assistant Grant reallocation.
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Very self-explanatory, 0668 is a $99,000 grant that the Boston Police Department needs to address the Massachusetts Sex Offenders Registry Board mandated issue. So at this point in time, I'd like to have this suspended and passed.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. At this time, Counselor McCarthy, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0668. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0668 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could read dockets 0669 and 0670 together, that'd be great.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0669, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $5,000 in the form of a grant from the Emerging Artist Award Fund awarded by the Boston Foundation to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant would fund the original creation of contemporary artwork for emerging artists.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, I move to suspend the rules and pass both dockets, 0669 and 0670. With regards to 0670, it supports emerging artists, so important, and our city obviously would like to take just a, just one minute to talk a little bit about docket 0669, which is the $5,000 grant to support the Roxbury Cultural District. This is really important, you know, the investment in arts in our city overall. This is the first anniversary of the designation of the Roxbury Cultural District. There are amazing events happening in the next couple of weeks that I hope my colleagues will be able to attend. There's a gala on Friday, May 18th, and then also on 19th, there's a festival to celebrate all of the good work that we have seen throughout our community in terms of just artists who have been there, artists like a new addition, Roy Haynes, so many to name. And, you know, I just want to take a moment to congratulate all of those who were involved in making sure that we got this designation for the Roxbury Cultural District. We certainly need more investment in like this, so this is a great seed money. Encourage everyone to please come to the events. And again, I move to suspend and pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0669. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0669 has been passed. Similarly, Counselor Janey, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0670. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0670 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others?
Madam President, would you like me to read docket 0671 through 0677?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket number 0671, notices received from the Mayor of the reappointment of Tony Barros as a member of the Boston School Committee Nominating Panel for a term expiring April 13th, 2020. Docket number 0672, notices received from the Mayor of the reappointment of Laurie Ciati as a member of the Boston School Committee Nominating Panel for a term expiring April 13th, 2020. Docket number 0673, notices received from the Mayor of the reappointment of Amelia Courtoy to serve as an ex officio trustee to the Boston Groundwater Trust. Docket number 0676, notices received from the Mayor of the appointment of Michael Parker as a chairperson of the Boston Conservation Commission, effective immediately. And docket number 0677, notices received from the Mayor delegating authority to Alexis Tukchuk, the Director of Emerging Industries, to execute on my behalf, host community agreements with marijuana establishment or medical marijuana treatment centers pursuant to Section 3 of Chapter 94G of the General Laws.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0671 through 0677 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0559 through 0563, order for the FY-19 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations, annual appropriations for the school department, appropriation for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, appropriations for certain transportation and public realm improvements, and appropriation for certain PAC improvements.
Docket 0559 through 0563 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0584, message and order for an appropriation in the amount of $4,400,000 from the 21st Century Fund, also known as the Public Educational or Governmental PEG Access and Cable Related Fund pursuant to Section 53F and 3/4 of Chapter 44 of General Laws to the PEG Access and Cable Related Grant for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement. Docket number 0676, notice as received from the Mayor of the appointment of Michael Parker as a chairperson of the Boston Conservation Commission, effective immediately. And docket number 0677, notice as received from the Mayor, delegating authority to Alexis Tukchuk, the Director of Emerging Industries, to execute on my behalf, host community agreements with marijuana establishment or medical marijuana treatment centers pursuant to Section 3 of Chapter 94G of the General Laws.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0671 through 0677 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0559 through 0563, order for the FY-19 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations, annual appropriations for the school department, appropriation for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, appropriations for certain transportation and public realm improvements, and appropriation for certain PAC improvements.
Dockets 0559 through 0563 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0584, message and order for an appropriation in the amount of $4,400,000 from the 21st Century Fund, also known as the Public Educational or Governmental PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, pursuant to Section 53F and 3/4 of Chapter 44 of General Laws to the PEG Access and Cable Related Grant for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreements between the cable operator and the city, including but not limited to supporting public educational or governmental access cable television services, monitoring compliance of cable operator with the franchise agreement, and preparation of renewal for the franchise license.
Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This matter was sponsored by the Mayor and referred to the Committee on Ways and Means on April 11th. We held a public hearing this past Monday, April 30th. We had testimony provided by Mike Lynch, the Director of Broadband from the Department of Innovation and Technology. The payments are made from cable franchise companies such as Comcast, RCN, and Verizon FiOS to the City of Boston. The $4.4 million appropriation will be used to support the public access television and radio stations dedicated to public educational and government programming. In addition, funding will also be used to monitor compliance with cable franchise agreements or prepare for license renewal per the legislation. PEG providers include Boston City Council, Boston Neighborhood Network Television, City Television, and the WBCA Low Power FM Community Radio Station, and others that convey valuable public service in television and radio programming, which are essential service for the local Boston community. It was reported that Verizon FiOS is currently serving about a third of the city and working to expand to cover a half of the city. They have started offering services to thousands of residents and continue to build on that success. Verizon's footprint is seen around the city with some overlap of service in competition with other cable companies such as Comcast and RCN. Discuss was competition from the various cable franchises to offer better prices and services to its customers. I recommend passage of this docket.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. At this time, Counsel Siomo, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends passage of docket 0584. Madam Clerk, if we could call the roll for that docket?
Docket number 0584, Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Pressley.
Yes.
Counsel Pressley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0584 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0584 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets 0135 through 0615 together?
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you.
Docket number 0135, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,600,000 in the form of a grant for the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Amendment FY-18 and FY-19, awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a comprehensive inter-agency strategy that connects law enforcement, employment, education, and public health, and youth development agencies to reduce violence in the Commonwealth. Docket number 0141, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $115,000 in the form of a grant for the FFY-17 Violence Against Women Act Stop Grant, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant would fund one full-time PBD, BPD, sorry, civilian domestic violence advocate position, and a portion of another. Docket number 0233, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept an amount of $30,000 in the form of a grant for the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force Program, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund surveillance vehicles for the Boston Police Fugitive Unit. Docket number 0284, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,075,915.41 in the form of a grant for the Charles R. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative, awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, reintegration-type programs. Docket number 0613, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,750,000 in the amount of a grant for the FY-18 State Training Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Boston Fire Department. The grant will fund the BFD Training Division for the FY-18. The state earmark supplements training, supplies, and materials for the Boston Fire Training Division and Academy. And docket number 0615, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $237,500 in the form of a grant for the FY-18 State Hazmat Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund training supplies and staff expenses for the hazardous materials team.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We, the Public Safety and Criminal Justice, held a hearing yesterday regarding these dockets. Docket 0135, it's a comprehensive inter-agency strategy that connects law enforcement, employment, education, public health, and youth development agencies to reduce crime in the Commonwealth. Docket number 0141, this grant would fund one full-time Boston Police Department civilian in the domestic violence advocate position, and a portion of another. Docket number 0233, this grant will fund surveillance vehicles for the Boston Police Department Fugitive Unit. Docket number 0284 is a grant of a fund for regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through the coordinated prevention and intervention. Docket number 0613 is a grant for the Boston Fire Department and the Training Division for FY-18. This is a state earmark that supplies the training, supplies, and all the materials for Moon Island. And docket number 0615 is a grant that will fund training supplies and staff expenses for the Hazmat Team. After hearing this yesterday, I believe that these matters ought to pass.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. At this time, Counsel McCarthy recommends that these dockets pass. I'm going to take them individually, starting with docket 0135. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0135 has been passed. Docket 0141, all those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0141 has been passed. Docket 0233, all those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0233 has been passed. For docket 0284, all those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0284 has been passed. For docket 0613, all those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Docket 0, the ayes have it. Docket 0613 has been passed. Docket 0615, all those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0615 has been passed. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions?
Docket number 0678, Counselor Edwards offered the following resolution to promote human rights, free speech, and government accountability in Honduras.
Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And the weather is incredible, and I just wanted to say, today, I'm here standing in solidarity with many of the incredible people who live not only in East Boston but in our city of Boston. Many of those folks come from Central America, specifically the country of Honduras, and many of them live not only in our neighborhoods but are contributing members to our businesses, to where their children attend our schools. And many of them came here with the same dream that so many Americans have, which is to have peace, to have a future, and to be able to prosper. And unfortunately, there's still, many of them feel compelled to come here, not out of choice, but in order to save their own lives and the lives of their children. On average, we're receiving almost 100,000 Hondurans at our border because of the issues, many of which, you could look historically, have stemmed from some of our involvement in their country, but today are dealing with the current issue in elections and a lot of the corruption that they have to deal with their current government. Many people are concerned deeply about the fact that this is, or they claim that this is just a Honduran issue. Because they are here, because their families are here, we have to, as a City of Boston, stand in solidarity with them and call out the issues and call out the names. I'm talking about voter suppression, I'm talking about the corruption within our, the election system, we're talking about people who have experienced killings and attacks on their own family members when they stand up, violation of prisoner and human rights. All of these things are not just a Honduran issue, this is not just a U.S. issue, this is a human rights issue, and we have traditionally, as a City of Boston, stood up when we find that those issues are under attack. Today, we see that there's a caravan of individuals coming to our border from Central America to only highlight the current concern and issues that they're facing. We have people, also a week from now, we're expecting our U.S. government to come down and potentially end TPS, Temporary Protected Status, for the current Hondurans who live here. Temporary Protected Status would allow them to stay here and continue to prosper and work legally in the United States. What that does is only further eliminate the foundation and their futures here in this country by potentially deporting hundreds of thousands of people, many of whom live in my neighborhood. I stand here today, and I know many of us already stand here in solidarity with them to let them know, we see you, we value you. Berta Cacerjas did not die in vain, she was a human rights advocate, and she also was murdered by her government. And I'm also standing here to call on us, to call on our federal government, to support Congressman Hank Johnson's Berta Cacerjas Human Rights in Honduras Act, which would actually stem the flow of funds, of our funds, to the Honduran military in order to make sure that the military isn't using our money to further prosecute and oppress their own people. Again, knowing that at the City of Boston, we can only speak in solidarity, but also standing in solidarity means something to many of our constituents. So I ask that my fellow members pass this resolution and also comment, if you will, in solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Baker's name, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Sabby George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to come in the Maker, and again, it's unfortunate. I'm proud of this body that we continue to stand united in solidarity as an affront to this onslaught of attacks and violations of human rights, of civil rights, the many indignities and brutalities that Hondurans have been experiencing. So I rise and ask to have my name added. Yesterday, on International Workers' Day, almost 20,000 workers, rural residents, students, and members of unions and associations took part in the march in Honduras. And again, as a body, we have consistently recognized the importance and the democratic process of unions at this time, and certainly right now, this is no different. You know, ultimately, I think what we are affirming here each week with these assaults on our brothers and sisters is that our destinies are tied. Immigrants' rights, workers' rights, women's rights, they are all human rights. And so again, I thank you for your leadership. I rise and ask to have my name added, and I also did just wanted to take a moment and say, we also stand in solidarity with the Nepalese community. We have a large constituency of Nepalese here, and it is just hard to believe that these are the times that we're in, and that certainly stands, as does this, to separate and devastate families and to decimate communities and to destabilize our very communities and our economy. So we have to continue to stand in solidarity as an affront to these attacks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Presley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Presley's name, and I'll just quickly add, thank you, Counsel Edwards, for bringing this forward. I think folks often look at the agenda and see another country and don't think that the council can play a role in what's happening around the world, and we can. And not simply through resolutions, this body has been the leader when it comes to being a little bit more proactive than reactive when standing with our brothers and sisters who are coming from Central America and other parts of the world. So thank you for your leadership, and I want to also thank my colleagues for their leadership over the years with respect to these issues. At this time, Counsel Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0678. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0678 has been adopted.
Docket 0679, Counselors Wu and Zachem offered the following resolution in support of protected bike lanes on Longfellow Bridge.
Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I am honored to bring this forth with my colleague Counsel Zachem, and would ask that our council consider today suspending and passing, adopting this resolution that would put us on the same page as our colleagues in Cambridge, as the electives at the state level, and as the advocates and cyclists across the region, in asking that the Longfellow Bridge is reopening as the final phase of reconstruction wraps up this month, that the safety of cyclists is truly incorporated into that. I want to note from the beginning that the city and the state, Mastod, and the City of Boston Transportation Department have made huge strides in our commitment to getting to Vision Zero, and the mayor's put a ton of resources into planning for dedicated bus lanes and protected cycle tracks. I want to make sure that our advocacy extends to this very concrete and immediate issue of the Longfellow Bridge as well. So let me get a little bit into the details because it's a very specific ask, and that's the fact that as the bridge goes from Cambridge into Boston inbound, it's steep on that first half of the bridge. And when it's that steep, when you have a narrower bike lane, it actually makes it unsafe for cyclists of different abilities who may need to pass each other, as certain, you know, slow people are going slowly up the incline, and others who are much, you go much faster have to go around them into traffic. The current plan that Mastod has now approved includes a painted bike lane with flex posts, but again, would still squeeze cyclists into that lane, in that half of the bridge, and encourage some to go around. What the community has been asking for from the beginning, what the Cambridge City Council has unanimously supported, is a version where there would be only one inbound car lane coming across the bridge for that first half of the bridge, and a wider cycling lane protected all the way, so that cyclist can sort of get up to the hump of the bridge. After that, it would go back down to a narrower bike lane and two lanes of car traffic. Mastod, I want to give them full credit, since Cambridge passed the resolution, and on the same day that the board had their meeting and all, a lot of advocates showed up, on that same day, they announced that they were going to take it one step further than their initial plans, and put in the flex posts, and talk about a pilot of whether we, again, change the lanes from two to one car lanes and expand the cycle track. They haven't been very clear about what that pilot would involve, and in all public statements, they've said, we want to first see what the baseline is of traffic, et cetera, et cetera. What I would like to reiterate is, again, what our colleagues across the river have said, which is that there's currently only one lane of inbound traffic there, and it has not caused massive backups on the Cambridge side. Moreover, both the council and the administration in Cambridge have said they do not want to be, they do not want a fear of backups into Cambridge to be a reason why this doesn't happen. They are in full support across the board over there. So again, this resolution is to make sure that we on this side of the river are getting on the same page and adding our voices to that Vision Zero advocacy, something that is very real and an opportunity that doesn't come along that often, that we're redoing a bridge and expending all the resources now, let's get it right from the beginning. And if there will be a pilot, let's make sure that Mastod is talking to the advocates about, what are we measuring as a baseline for success, and how can we ensure that this pilot doesn't set itself up for failure, as we've seen others like the late-night tea pilot, when there's not clear guidelines in the beginning. So I want to encourage everyone to sign on, this is something real that we could do today to send a message. The lack of, the lack of position from Boston has been noted publicly, both from the council and the administration, and I want to make sure that we're standing up, and want to encourage our allies who have been doing great work, Chief Osgood, Commissioner Fiandaca... our allies who have been doing great work, Chief Osgood, Commissioner Fiandaca as well, to make sure that we are making ourselves as clear as possible in expressing this to the state. So I would ask for suspension and passage. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counsel Wu for taking the lead on this, for working with so many transportation planners, advocates in the cycling community, and many of our neighbors in putting this together. I think, as Counsel Wu said, this is a unique opportunity for us. We've had, for years, the ongoing work on the Longfellow Bridge that I pass, I don't know how many times, a day, on foot, in a car, rarely cycling, but occasionally, and it's a real opportunity. When this initial planning process began, it was a much different discussion around cycling infrastructure in the City of Boston. We've come a long way. We've had partnership from the mayor, from Vision Zero, from BTD, and from folks throughout our community, including many of our civic associations. So I think it's a unique opportunity to join our neighbors in Cambridge on something that's going to make a real difference in safety, and for pedestrians, cyclists alike, and for folks in their cars. I think this is really important. As we noted in this resolution, as Counsel Wu said in her remarks, for all the headaches of the construction over the years, traffic continues to flow fairly smoothly across that bridge, even with the reduced lanes, and I think it's something that we can sustain moving forward, as we want to continue to encourage people to use other modes of transportation that actually are healthier, often safer than driving. This is an important step to take, and I look forward to working with Mastod and our neighbors and the administration here to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu. Counsel Zachem. Counsel Mc... Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just rise to thank Counsel Wu and Counsel Zachem for this resolution. I've learned an awful lot about bicyclists, and since I became District 5 City Council, we're very active in District 5 right now. I also want to thank the mayor and Commissioner Fiandaca. But I think we also need to thank Governor Baker, and in particular, Administrator Jonathan Gulliver, who've been working very close with Cambridge, with Boston, to make sure that whatever happens there, and I think, as Counsel Wu said, you know, do it right once, do it the first time once, I think that's the path that they're on. So I just wanted to stand up, and it's been a pleasure working with Mastod on not only this issue but other issues, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Pressley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to come in the makers, and just to say, you know, ostensibly, you know, our job, what we wake up every day to do, other than just broadly to help people, is to solve problems. And so often, the problems that we wish to tackle, you know, the yield of them, the tangible sort of palpable, you know, yield is far-reaching and many, many years away from us, or we're not sure, you know, what we can cling to to actually solve that problem. You know, Tina Cherry was here earlier today, when we think about gun violence, we're like, what is the single way that we can resolve that? What's the immediate thing? There isn't an immediate thing, because it requires our addressing a number of other social determinants and systemic issues. This is also violence. The fact that people, you know, live in fear and feel vulnerable on our roadways, and it's something that we can fix, a problem that we can solve to prevent cyclist and motor vehicle collisions, it's important that we never lose sight of the fact that this is literally about life and death, and we can solve this problem by making the tangible investments in infrastructure, and that feels good. So I rise to come in the makers, and I wish to have my name added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pressley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Pressley and Counsel McCarthy's names, as well as Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel O'Malley, as well as the Chair. At this time, Counselors Wu and Zachem seek suspension of the rules and passage... I'm sorry, adoption of docket 0679. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0679 has been adopted. Personnel orders?
Docket number 0680, Counsel Campbell for Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Edwards, at this time, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0680. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0680 has been passed.
Docket 0681, Counsel Campbell for Counselor Edwards.
Counsel Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0681. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0681 has been passed. At this time, I am informed by the clerk, there are no late-file matters to be added to the agenda. Anyone wishing to remove something from the green sheets may do so at this time. Seeing and hearing none, moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that we have three late-file matters to be added to the consent agenda. In the absence of objection, those matters... Those three resolutions will be added. Hearing and seeing no objections, those matters have been added. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. At this time, I ask all guests and all of my colleagues and staffers to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Siomo. For Counselor Siomo, Stephen Hilton. For Counselor Asabi George, Gene Campbell Sullivan, John L. Sullivan. For Counselors Flaherty, Baker, and the Chair, as well as the Clerk, Mary Brett McCarthy. For Counselors Flaherty and Flynn, Marie Rick. For Counselor Flynn, Jane Grealish. For Counselor McCarthy, Joe Walsh, Ryan Wainwright, and Corinne Canale. For Counselor O'Malley, Terrence O'Donohue, Helen Tower, and Cara McDonald. For Counselor Pressley, Barton Warren Conrad III. And for all counselors, Josephine Falchione, Lee's mom. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that at this time, when the council adjourns, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, May 9th, at noon at the Boston City Council. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.